In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency of a executive order of dated March 12th, 2020, town of Situate public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be live recorded by Situate Television and can be viewed live on cable television Channel 9. Participation for the public area will be available by audio conference bridge. For audio participation, call and can be accessed via any of the numbers listed below, which I'm going to list in a moment. Please note long distance charts may apply depending upon the calling plan. Follow the instructions for the calling service. Questions or comments will be allowed during a moderated Q and A period following the audio direction. Your phone line will otherwise be muted as you can listen to the audio. The dialing phone numbers are (425) 436-6308 and also (425) 436-638 and (425) 436-6300. The access code is (817) 651-POUND. Again, the access code is (817) 651-POUND. So with that, this is the voice of Andy Fucari, the Chair of the Board of Appeals. I am participating remotely. We have two of our other members present at the Public Safety Building, and we are going to call the meeting to order. With that, we are going to call our first application, which is continued from August 20th, 2020. It's an application of Brian and Melanie Legge, here of Walter B. Sullivan. And this is an application requesting to allow for the construction of a 30 by 15 foot swimming pool and a 10 by 12 foot pool house on the south side of the lot, this is Parker Avenue, on a non-conforming lot at Moreland Road in Situate. Some of those dimensions have since been amended, but I am going to make a motion that we allow the applicant's request for a continuation to our October meeting. And before we hear that motion, I'm just going to remind people that though we are trying, I mean, sometimes you will not be muted, if you would ask that everyone try to mute their own phones or limit background noise so that we can stop the meeting in its remote setting as efficiently as possible.
Anthony?
Yes?
This is Ed Tilletts. I am also present at the meeting at the Public Safety Building.
Hello, Evan. It's Ed. Welcome.
Thanks.
All right. Well, we have a little bit of background noise working, but...
Anthony, I would make a motion to expect, accept the applicant's motion for, or request for a continuation.
It's really hard to hear the meeting.
And what's the background? Andy, are you able to mute the participants?
Um... Better now, but...
All right. Let's just get going while we can. I made a motion. Did we, I think we had a second during the background noise?
Correct. Second? There was a motion and a second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Saltusburg.
It's unanimous?
All right. Let's go ahead. Now, uh, so there we go. That's so continued. Ed, with your presence at the Public Safety Building, would you be able to run the next two applications? And I'll certainly participate, but I think it makes more sense for you to run them from your location.
I'd be happy to, except I was not present for the, I'd only watched the tape on the next application, so I would, if George or Brian was here for that meeting for that one, George move here.
I think, so Moreland Road continues, and then my, I believe that 11 Pine View continued in September, so we didn't hear anything. Am I remembering correctly?
And so we are opening the, we're effectively having first testimony on 11 Moreland, is that correct?
Correct.
11 Pine View.
11 Pine View. Correct. He has not seen that before.
I don't believe we have.
All right. So the second application is continued from August 20th, 2020. Christopher Sacatella, trustee for the M.O.D.E. Realty Trust, here of Walter B. Sullivan, Sullivan and Commerford, PC, A Washington Street, Building B, 7, Suite 7, Norwell. Requested variance to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling at 11 Pine View Drive, Situate, Mass. Assessors map, 35, Block 5, Parcel 2, on a lot that has been in existence since 1963 and contains 4,352 square feet, inclusive of uplands and land subject to MTL Chapter 131, Section 40. So is Mr. Sullivan available?
I'm Walter Sullivan. I'm present.
Walter, do you want to go ahead and share with us, recall on what you're trying to accomplish here?
Yes. Yes. I have trouble hearing the background, because the gentleman is speaking in a war of echo length. Did he ask if I'm here?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Am I not coming through?
Uh, Walter, I can hear, we can hear you clearly.
All right. Why don't I proceed then?
Go ahead and proceed, and we'll let you know if it's, if we become involved. Go ahead, Walter.
Should I proceed?
Yes, please.
Yes. I represent Christopher Sacatella, the trustee of the M.O.D.E. Realty Trust, owner of 11 Pine View here in town. As indicated in our memorandum, the Sacatella family purchased 5 Pine Rooms, 5 Pine View Drive, which is adjacent to 11, in 1966. In 1978, they purchased 11 Pine Views, and it was in the same name as 5, it was the name of Mr. and Mrs. Sacatella. At that time, both lots were buildable and compliant with all fronted area requirements for the R1 district. In 1987, nine years later after their buy of 11 Pine View, Section 610.1 of the district showing by law was amended, and pertinent parties indicate that all of the area needed to be uplaid to be compliant as a buildable lot in the R1. The elect, like one baby went down, this is something Sacatella's not aware of. The 11 Pine View only has 29,959 square feet of upland. On October 23rd, Mr. and Mrs. Sacatella sold the family home with 5 Pine View, and they conveyed 11 Pine View to their three sons in the M.O.D.E. Realty Trust. The Sacatellas were of the belief that this was a buildable lot, and they could market it as such, and they explored, and then they discovered that they had this problem with 610.1 as it relates to this lot. Because of the holding on Impression versus Holland, others, obviously there was a merger problem, and the lot was not grandfather protected, they met with the building inspector who gave them that opinion. So the only relief available to them to have this as a buildable lot would be seeking variance. Obviously, if this board granted a variance, my clients would also have to go to the Conservation Commission because it does come within the purview of 131, and they would need to get orders of condition to build a house. We supplemented our original bylaw with a plan where the engineer Karen was over to on line to sort of indicate where the wetland line was, and of course, not being with you, I can't really see if you have it in front of you, but that is the blue line on the outer edge where the original engineer put drive, what that is, the wetland line. That is 87 feet from the proposed structure. So obviously, orders of condition would have to be seen, but it is within the 50 feet, no build zone. So we believe that this is a unique circumstance to this land. It was, for all intensive purposes, they grant other protective laws, but due to it merging with the original house, for zoning purposes, it lost that grandfather protection. We think it's a unique situation that should give rise to zoning relief. It's a tremendous hardship to the Sacatella family, essentially the lot has no value. Both the house lot and 5 Pine View, there's many alienated, and another family obviously lives there. This lot is of significant size, and if a variance was granted, as I indicated, we would still have to satisfy the Conservation Commission as it relates to wetlands, and obviously, the Conservation Commission would be in a good position to put in safeguards that protect the rationale behind excluding wetlands from calculation of gross square footage. There are 29,000 square feet of uplands here, so this is a significant amount that would allow for a single-family home. It's obviously lots in town of that size. The lot was originally grandfather protected from that taking, but obviously, because the house next door was in the same name that lost that protection. So the Sacatellas are seeking the relief from the zoning board of appeals. They then will go to the Conservation Commission to relieve so that they will be eligible for building from it.
Walter, Brian Sullivan, thank you for bringing your application to us. I understand that the lot merged and that it's currently unbuildable. How do you overcome the argument that the hardship is of your client or their predecessor entitled's own creation?
I'm not sure I heard the last part, but I guess you're asking me, how do I get over the hardship as being created by my clients?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, you know, I can't get around the background, actually, like a lot of people, my clients are unaware of this house. They heated it over to their children, thinking that it was still a buildable lot, and that was the intention of them. What I would argue is that at all times material, the lot retained its individual separateness from the homestead. Obviously, there is a problem here for merger and the holding of Impression versus Holland. The only relief available is a variance. We recognize that the hard standard, but I would suggest that imposing an amendment that was really sort of a weapon deposition on a zoning bylaw, as the town meeting, as I understand it occurred, you know, most people in town don't go to town meeting, and I understand that shame on them, but this is something they were totally unaware of that happened. And I think that the relief, the zoning board can feel comfort and grant it relief, because you still ultimately have to go to the Conservation Commission. So, you know, I guess my first argument, Brian, would be that at all times material, the Sacatellas kept the identity of the lot separate and distinct from the house lot. And, you know, the fact that they were unaware of the zoning change would really be an incredible hardship to impose upon them and take away a buildable lot.
I appreciate the argument. And I think that in 1987, an argument could be, hey, the passing of the bylaw was arguably a taken, but I think that ship has sailed. I, I, um, I feel bad for your clients, but the trust was conveyed to them, I would guess for, the property was conveyed to the trust, to the three sons, I would guess for nominal consideration, was not an arms-length transaction, and I don't see that you get past merger, Walter. I, again, I feel bad, but that's not enough, that's not the reason to grant a variance. I don't, I don't think it's even close, frankly.
Well, I think the only way, we can't get that merger, I agree with you, the only relief available to my clients would be a variance from the 610.1 requirement. I think that's the only relief available, and we recognize it's a hard standard. But I wouldn't suggest that, I think this is sort of a unique situation, where this was clearly a buildable lot for many, many years, and was protected as such, and then, you know, but for a insertion at a town meeting warrant article changed, I think that's a hardship that the board would do well to strongly consider to grant the variance.
Ed, George?
George, any ideas?
Yeah, I'm also struggling with, I mean, the one thing in their favor is that there was no actual communion of deed, right? If there were two separate deeds from the beginning, that's my understanding.
But there was unity of title.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. So that's one argument, but then you have the unity of title, and I don't know, and it wasn't, I mean, it's full unity of title, it was the exact same party, it's not like one was in the trust and one was, you know, or, or the deed, one deed was in the wife's name, one was in the husband's.
It wasn't really there, but here it was in the exact same title.
Right. That's my, again, that's my...
George, gentlemen, gentlemen, this is Ed. It's tough to make out, not the true saying, Walter, but it's tough to make out what you're saying over the phone connection. George, if you could speak up a little bit, and then I think we just need a little bit more of a hard stop in between one person and the other. I guess on one hand, it's good I'm getting this perspective on what it sounds like over the phone.
I think, Brian, is this better if we speak without a mask?
Much, much better.
Okay. All right. I think we can, we can take the risk of wearing our mask when we speak and also take turns. Let's try it out.
Okay. So what I was saying, Tony, was the only argument that I see in favor is that the deeds from the beginning were separate, right? But, right, to Brian's point, the, there was true unity of title, right? It was the exact same ownership. It was not a situation, what we were discussing was that it was not a situation where one deed was in the wife's name, the other deed was in the husband's name, or the deed was in the children's name, or was in the trust at one point, right? So, so that's the negative. The other negative that I see is, again, the other point that was made, this conveyance, right, occurred in 1996, right? The zoning bylaw changed in 1987, right? And 5 Pine View, right? So this property was purchased in 78, right, which was a number of years after the original home, right, existed. So it's all, I mean, we appreciate, I think we're all looking at each other, saying we appreciate the issue, we just don't see how we can get over the title, the unity of title issue.
Sure. So, so I, I have something to add. So I think, and Walter, speak up if you disagree, but it sounds to me like the applicant is, for all intensive purposes, conceding the merger, the merger issue. The applicant is not disputing the merger, they're not disputing that that removes the grandfathering, and they are stating that, given that the lot is not grandfathered, it is not considered pre-existing, non-conforming, they are submitting to the board that they qualify for a variance, which is what would be needed in the lot with not grandfather. So I tend to, in the analysis, move past that issue and then look to apply the variance standard, and I think we should probably go through the exercise. So the first question for me, due to circumstances concerning soil conditions, shape of the lot, et cetera, and that was a slam dunk for me. I think a portion of the lot being wetland that lowered it below the minimum lot size, those are soil conditions in high islands, but that's only one of five. So two, especially affect the land but not the zoning district generally. Well, again, not a lot which is big enough but not big enough because of wetlands and the upland calculation is not general, so I would say, okay, I can get there on two as well. Three, literal enforcement of the zoning order would cause substantial hardship. You know, this is much less of a slam dunk for me, but let's say for a minute that I agreed with Walter, and that because the family has owned this since prior to the ordinance, let's say we could get there on the substantial hardship, but let's take on three for a moment. Four and five are very similar in my eyes, it's almost 4A and 4B, relief to be granted without substantial detriment and without nullifying or substantially derogating, I guess is the word that I was, that question there, from the intent or purpose of the ordinance. So I, the point that Walter makes is, I can see that we're not substantially nullifying or derogating from the point of the ordinance, because the point of the ordinance is, in my mind, obviously, to protect weapons, and the Conservation Commission is going to have their significant and, dare I say, more educated bite of the apple on that front. And without substantial detriment to the public good, for me, I'm not sure that there is much detriment to the public good beyond the potential sullied of the weapons. So I, for me, it hangs on the hardship and that four and five question. And so for me, really what I wanted to get across, I really put aside the merger, I don't think the applicant is arguing with us on that point. I think they concede the merger, and they say, no, we want to project ourselves to the variance standard that they think they need it. That is, that is, it's a question, but it merged, otherwise we would be seeking the variance, seeking a finding that merger was not applicable, and that's not it. So I think fellow members of the board, we really need to concentrate on the variance standard. I would be very interested to hear if you guys disagree with me on one or two, and then really, I think three, four, and five are the meat and potatoes.
As a, as a non-member of the bar, I just, I'm curious for my own application, is when the applicant, when the merger took place, how then was this parcel deeded off if it had once merged?
So I apologize. I'm not sure I heard everything. So it's, Walter, the question was that Ed wanted some clarification on how the lot was deeded off if it had merged. And Ed, my, my quick answer to that question is, merger is a, is a fickle beast, the case that Walter referred to addressed its merger, in that a lot can lose its grandfathering if it's treated as one with another lot, but for the purposes of conveyancing, a lot may remain separate and able to be conveyed separately. Really, for, as long as two things happen, one is, there isn't a clear intent of the owner for the two lots to become one, and the other is, as long as that conveyance out of that lot that might have merged does violate subdivision control law. And here, I think there was not some clear intention of the owners for the lot to merge, and while it may or may not be buildable, depending on our outcome, I don't believe this lot violates subdivision control law. Walter, would you concur?
I do. I always say there's a difference between zoning and title, and, you know, obviously, look, obviously, the Sacatellas thought it was still buildable when they needed it to their son. They were unaware of the nuance of the change in the bylaw, but whoever took title to 5 Pine View, obviously, isn't looking at zoning the wetlands that are on Lot 11 and when it merged. They know they're just getting to tuck the deed for 5 Pine Views, so I think that was an appropriate conveyance, and I don't think it's a title issue at all. Obviously, we're just confronted with a zoning issue as it relates to 11, due to the zoning change in 1987.
And I was not...
I think you said it most succinctly, Anthony. I apologize if I confused things.
I was not...
I don't, I don't think you did.
I was not suggesting that there was any title issue, I was simply, for my own education, I was curious as to, because of this law of merger, I always had, I've struggled with it a bit. Any, George or Brian, any comments with respect to Anthony's comments?
I think, for me, this hinges on the final point. I don't believe that there's a substantial detriment to the public good from the facts presented so far. Hardship, substantial, what substantial hardship means in light of, this was a situation that was effectively the owner's own doing, right? So that sort of mitigates the substantial hardship somewhat, but I can see an argument for hardship, okay? There clearly was an intent for this to be separately deeded for a purpose, you know, for it to be buildable at some point. The question is, does this relief nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw? All right? And I don't know, I don't believe it nullifies it by any means, but the intent of the change in 87 was to make property like this not buildable, all right? That was, that is, well, you can argue whether that was the intent, that was...
It's uncontroverted that was the intent of town meeting.
So, so that's, that's where I'm, you know, I'm on the fence.
I am not on the fence. It's, this is not even close, and Walter, I'm quite fond of you, and I apologize for coming down on you like this, but your clients and their predecessors entitled had a conforming lot. They created, by their own deed, their own act, a non-conforming lot. That was their choice. Now, they come to the ZDA for relief. I think their remedy was in 1987, after town meeting rendered their lot unbuildable, their remedy was relief that it was a taken. Again, I understand all the other arguments, I don't see that you get past that this was self-created and it is not a hardship. The land is not workless. You can't put a house on it, but it does have value, it could be conveyed to it of butter, and Anthony, I disagree that this lot, inasmuch as it contains wetlands and uplands, is unique to the district.
Well, the only exception I would make, when you say that my clients created, drawn hardship when they took title to it, I disagree. It was a preserved and protected buildable lot up until 1987, and that wasn't something they did, that was something that the town did. And, and, you know, I completely agree, the lot's burned, there's no other way around it, and for purposes like 1987 changed that requirement, Brian. The only relief available to my clients is to make the argument that we satisfied the very strict requirements for a variance, and I would suggest that we keep those standards, that this is a hardship. And I think, I think the reason that the zoning board of appeals can take comfort in granting a variance in this is that the Conservation Commission, who inserted that amendment in 1987, retains jurisdiction over this land, so as it relates to the fourth and standard, they can make sure that there's no derivation of the neighborhood when my clients apply the orders of condition.
Is it, shall we go ahead with, see if there's any public comment on this? Any objection? Anthony?
No, no. I, no, I think public comment's a good idea. Great.
All right. We're going to, for the public who's listening in or watching on local channel, this is a technological advance for all of us. We're struggling sometimes, and we're going to give a, try to unmute those who wish to have public comment. I believe in order to comment, they have to do star six.
This is Dave Sacatella. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dave.
Hi, yeah?
Yes.
Hey, how you doing? Thanks for your, thanks for listening to us tonight. I'm Dave Sacatella. Uh, I'm Dave Sagetella and I'm one of the, I guess, the three owners or part of the trusteeship for the, uh, the property. Uh, yeah, I'd like to, you know, appreciate everyone's efforts and consideration tonight. Um, you know, lived next to the, been on the property for, you know, the years I grew up there and, and I know also like to, I don't know if it makes a difference, but look at some of the adjacent properties that probably have the same, or even less, uh, beneficial to the wetland, the property configuration, if that has anything to do with it and, um, how that might apply to it. I've, um, yeah, I'm aware and, and appreciate all the stuff you guys do, but, uh, I'm not seeing how this is all that much different from the, the neighborhood. You know, it's Detroit and it's always been there and, um, probably neighbors that are there a lot are still there. So, I wish I could say more, uh, in legal ways, but it's a, um, you know, I- trying to understand how something that was good is not be good anymore. And I know there's rules that change and there's men that make those rules, but the physical part of those things, the physical land is still there and it's still a beneficial piece of land, it's still a good piece of land and, and there's, and from what I understand, there's other folks that are more concerned with the things that other people are concerned with, that have a chance to say stuff in the future, so not really understand it, but the real hangups other than one, two, three, four, five, which I wish I had read them before I, um, dived into the meeting. But thanks for listening to me and, uh, appreciate all the emphasis, yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Hello?
Yes? Can you say your name and address, please?
Sure. This is Eric Saltzler of 19 Pine View Drive together with his wife Christina Saltzler. We submitted a letter to the board, uh, and we would like to express our concern and objection to the granting of a variance. The subject lot does not contain any till, topography, or soil as the applicant asserts. Whether it's like many other properties in Situate and within the neighborhood, it is common in our seaside towns to have a lot of reasonable size that is materially affected by wetlands and does not contain sufficient upland to reasonably support construction. Without unique topographies, soil conditions, or shape, the lot does not meet the standards for granting of a variance. This specific property contains material amounts of wetland and we have observed frequent flooding of the property well beyond the area designated wetlands. As it borders with a view of the wetland and supposed to the upland on the property, we can attest that the property floods well into the area considered upland. Our two-year-old daughter enjoys it as we look out of her bedroom window in the spring on that side of the house and watch the ducks swimming around near the middle of the lot. In anecdote, it gives the board an idea of how much water is frequently on that property. We also contend that the history of the property, while interesting, is irrelevant. The applicant and parents have owned the property since it was created and did not build on it. They conveyed the property 33 years ago. That was longer ago than I was born. There was a time that one could build upon whatever land and wherever within the town, but the town has widely regulated building and refined that regulation over time. Ignorance of the law is not an excuse for breaking the law. That property was deemed buildable over 30 years ago is irrelevant as the same will apply to many lots across town. Finally, owing to a lot existing within both a floodplain and watershed protection overlay district as well as a water resource protection district, the risks of creating precedent are magnified. As a water insecure town, as evidenced by us having been on a water ban since June, we need to take all steps to protect our water resources and that is not consistent with approving a variance to build into a wetland area extreme that feeds directly into tax factory pond and our drinking water supply. These overlay districts, especially with regard to the water resource protection overlay districts, were thoughtfully considered to protect a scarce and arduous resource and granting an exception in this case would clearly constitute a substantial detriment to the public good. The law does not contain unusual soil, shape, top, or topography that would warrant granting of a variance and furthermore, the granting of a variance to this lot would create a dangerous precedent with widespread impact on our community. Thank you, uh, for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Any, anyone in queue?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, this is John Stavich. I'm, uh, the current owner of five Pine, five Pine View Drive, the Upper Butter and I would just like to, uh, say that I agree wholeheartedly with Eric in his assessment and, uh, would support his view of the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the queue? To the best of our knowledge, there's no one else wishing to speak on this matter. We'll close the Q and A, the question and answer period. The board will have an opportunity to discuss. Any additional comments, Brian, George?
Um, I, just, just what I've said, uh, I don't think they meet the standard. It is a high standard and I do not think they meet it. I appreciate, um, I appreciate the, the argument that Walter made. I think Walter did the best that he could do with the facts. Um, I disagree with Anthony that, that this lot is unique, um, because of its, uh, well, I mean, the shape may be unique is, you know, it's not square.
It's unusual.
Yeah, but, uh, that's not, that's not enough. That's, yeah, that's not the issue. Um, I don't, I don't see that they meet the, uh, high threshold for the granting of a variance. I don't think they meet the five prongs and, uh, for that reason, I am not inclined to grant them their variance.
So, uh, Ed, this is Anthony. Uh, I guess first, some people raise their eyebrows when Brian and I disagree like this. I personally think it's part of what makes the board better. Uh, I, I think that I understand his point. I think what, what gives me concern is that whenever I look at a variance application and I look at when it doesn't meet the standard, I, I try to think of a situation where a lot or a situation would meet the standard if I changed the facts. And what I struggle with here is it's, it's supposed to be a high standard. It is not supposed to be an insurmountable standard and I, I'm not positive, but I, but I, I am considering whether or not I think this, this scenario meets the standard. Uh, if this lot is unique, what, you know, we've all used the giant boulder, you know, one foot underground, but beyond just that one giant boulder, what else makes the lot unique? If it, if it isn't a hardship, what is a hardship? And, uh, so I, I by no means think this is a slam dunk variance, but to a certain extent, I, it sounds like I have a little bit of a differing opinion. Um, that's where I'm at.
Anthony, if I could try and answer those questions. Walter Sullivan submitted a decision for two Bailey's Island Road, also known as Great Rock Island. That was when the board granted a variance, I believe in 2012, maybe even. And that was, um, Great Rock Island is in, uh, the marsh as you drive toward the glades. It is a four-acre parcel of land, virtually, I think three acres or so of upland, the rest is marshland, but it had no frontage. It complete, it was, the lot was created by a land court deed, I think in 1912 or something, but-
Right.
There was no frontage. That met the standard because other than its lack of frontage, it met all the other requirements and it was unique. It was an island.
Your, your point is, your point is well taken. I, I, I understand that, uh, that's certainly more in the slam dunk variance category. I, uh, would, I, and I guess, Brian, a question for you is, so I, I think I do put a little stock in the fact that, that here, uh, and, you know, some of the public mentioned it, that the purpose of this change to the bylaw was to protect our wetlands and, but the, and the Conservation Commission is there in this instance to protect our wetlands and, and they're going to have ample opportunity, as the applicant council mentioned. So, I guess, given that the Conservation Commission has that significant bite of the apple, what is the, what's the downside here?
For whatever reason, town meeting decided lots that didn't have the requisite amount of upland, 10,000, 20,000, or 40,000 square feet, were now unbuildable. Not that they could be buildable if they passed muster with Concom, they were unbuildable.
About a point.
That was the taking.
Yep.
We cannot now dawn the 1987 mental mantle of town meeting and divine what they intended other than what's obvious on its face.
Yep. No, I, I understand your point.
And, and to sort of echo some of that, um, this is not an insubstantial, uh, there's not an insubstantial portion of this that is wetlands, right? So, if this did not meet the requirement for the zoning, um, by a few hundred square feet-
Did it have a snow-?
Twenty-five percent.
That would be, that would be a different story, right? But we're talking a third of the lot, oh, I'm sorry, 25% of the lot, right? 10,000, about 10,000 square feet.
Yep.
Right? And the abusers have indicated that that may be an underestimate.
Well, I don't know if that's true or not. Thankfully, George, uh, thank you, George. Respectfully, anecdotal evidence, while interesting and photos are always welcome, I, I'm going to go with what a wetland scientist says, the upland and the wetland is, and we can't be swayed by photos of ducks.
I, I couldn't agree more. But, but no, if it's a substantial portion, there's no argument there.
I'm going to go, uh, very much with my gut here. Um, in the early 1960s, my father, who was a developer in town, had a large portion of land, uh, commonly understood as Buller's Farm. There was a road laid out to have lots on either side of the road along the marsh area and the rules changed. And he, his development lost about, I'm going to guess it was about 20 lots and there was, uh, arguably at that time, he could have argued that there was a taking as a result. Um, he didn't. As a businessman in town, he felt that was in an inappropriate course of action, but that, but it clearly, what was buildable became unbuildable. And I do think Brian's comment about time is essential here. Back in 1997 or whatever, 87, um, there would be an appropriate, um, course of action, seeking relief or a taking or whatever. And I do appreciate that as, um, laypeople in the law, many of our citizens aren't aware of the consequences of town meeting with respect to their land, but it feels to me as though the, the ship has sailed, um, and mostly from the standpoint of where's the slippery slope? We do have many lots in town with insufficient upland and I don't really want the board to be put in the position by our action to have to mediate between what is insufficient upland. Clearly, Concom is able to, um, enforce regulations on, on their side that will protect our water resources and I, I admire and honor their skill and efforts in that respect, but the town made a rather significant decision in passing this zoning bylaw and I feel as though the, um, the bar for the variance hasn't been met largely as, inasmuch as it is of the, the property owner's own making, but also so much time has passed. If we start to look back and try to reopen 40-year-old zoning issues, I'm afraid we're, we'll never be able to get away with a, a one-month law, a one meeting a month, you know, scheduled ever again in the future.
Time for me goes to this standard of time, right?
Maybe it's better.
Yes.
Are you still there, Anthony?
I am.
Are we ready for a vote? Is there a motion?
I, I am, yes.
Is there a motion?
Uh, move to, uh, oh, sorry, Anthony.
No, please, go ahead.
Um, uh, move to deny the request of Christopher Sagetella, trustee of the Maude Realty Trust for a variance for the construction of a single-family dwelling at 11 Pine View Drive, Situate, uh, under-
X.
Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40.
I'm sorry, Brian, just, I, I would like to interrupt. I'm sorry. Just before we do that, should we get on the record the, the proposed size of the home? I, I actually don't see it on the plan here with whatever we're approving or denying. I, I feel like we should, we should have that in the record. I, I apologize for interrupting.
Uh, it's approximately 28th on the 53.
Walter, do you have the, the gross square footage of the home here? I certainly could be getting it on the plan.
It's on the plan, but I don't see the square footage. The, the dimensions are on the plan.
Uh, you're right. I, I have zero. Yes. All right. I, uh, I, uh, I'll hold for my concerns. Thank you, Brian. Sorry.
Um, thank you. So, uh, I move to deny the request of Christopher Sagetella, trustee of the Maude Realty Trust for the construction, requesting a variance under Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 10, to construct a single-family dwelling at 11 Pine View Drive in Situate.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of the motion to deny the application for a variance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Opposed. No abstentions, so there are three in favor of the denial and one opposed. The, the application is not supported and is denied. Walter, I'm sorry, I wish I would be able to give you a better answer, but we're trying to be as consistent as we ever have been.
Sorry, Walter.
I thank you for your time. Thank you, Walter. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Uh, next is the application of Martin and Ann Tome of 11 Second Ave, Situate, Mass. The Tome's request a variance pursuant to Section- The Tomeis request a variance pursuant to Section 950.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw and Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 10, and/or any other relief the Board of Appeals may grant to construct in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot at 11 Second Ave. in Situate.
Is the applicant on the phone?
Yes, we are.
Who do we have?
You're here.
Is this Mr. Tomei?
This is Martin Tomei, yes, it's my wife Anne Tomei, she's here.
All right. Do you want to give us a brief understanding of what you're hoping to do here?
Um, yes, I think I'll let Anne explain it.
Hi, yeah, we're applying to make an addition to the ground level of our home. The addition is 12 by 18. We want to make this addition, I don't know if you want to know why, I have pretty severe arthritis, and I've got interested in girding a endless pool, which is six by 14, so the 12 feet would allow six additional feet to access the endless pool, and the 18 would allow access to the apartment, because it's a pool that pushes water, so you can swim towards it. That's the point.
Anne, you have a 15,000 square foot lot, correct?
We do.
Why don't we move it back out of the, out of the footprint, out of the setback?
Okay, well, that's because we did it in management, and we saw that we were 24.5 feet from the street, and we wondered, could we put it, push it back to 30 feet to go along with the setback rule? And the building already has doors, it's kind of like two patio doors that open up to a small patio space where the proposed addition would go. So if we push it back by 30 feet, we would end up having to put a wall right in the middle of the door, which is, would be really hard to try to do the construction, because an addition is two windows as well.
Anne, if I could interrupt you, please?
Windows that would allow this 18 feet to be centered, but to push it back by 30
Anne?
It's impractical.
Okay, do you want to do this project anytime soon?
Yes, yes, but I mean...
If you do, if you do...
Was because of COVID, I was out of school for many, many months, and my arthritis kicked in, and so it was, I was putting outdoors, and it ends the ocean over the war front. So I would like to do this, but if for some reason there was a delay, you couldn't handle that, but to answer your question, yes, as what makes sense and is feasible.
What makes sense is for you to withdraw your application and move it back so that meets the setback, and then you can begin construction tomorrow. Well, as soon as you get your building burned. If you continue to want to work in the setback, number one, you have to meet the standard, and then secondly, we'd have to make a decision, then we'd have to file the decision, there's an appeal period, and then, after all of that time, we're looking at conservatively 110 days, assuming the decision is reached tonight, then you could begin construction. I, for me, it wouldn't be, if this were my house, in my project, it wouldn't be worth the five feet to delay a project that you say is important to you that length of time. You're talking, you're talking about being into probably January versus sooner.
Okay, well, first of all, can I just ask, with who am I speaking right now? Which one?
My name is Brian.
Oh, you're Brian, okay, thanks, yes, I've been paying attention all along during the meeting, Brian. So, do you have the pictures that I made, color copies of, by any chance?
Yeah, I have them in front of me.
Great, and can you see where those, the glass patio doors are kind of centered in the building?
Yeah.
Okay, so, this building is, is made out of stucco, and it's, it's a pretty finished home, our home is quite finished. If you look at just the center of where we want to put the addition, I, I'm not, it's such a rush that I would want to try to cut through the stucco and remove the doors, the doors would be, the addition would be accessible from the ground level through those doors. So I'd rather, you know, keep the dimensions the way they are and wait if I have to.
Okay, thank you, I tried. Now, Anne, could you, could you explain why you believe you meet the standard for the granting of a variance?
Actually, I have a question before the applicant answers that question. Really, for my fellow board members, and I know I do this a lot, sometimes for me, and sometimes it's for the record, it's for the public. We have a house that's been currently pre-existing non-conforming as to the front setback along Second Avenue, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And this would be an addition which has more running feet within the setback, within that same setback that the home is already violating, and it is not closer to that setback. I feel like we've talked about this before. Is this not an extension for an intensification of a non-conformity?
Anthony, I believe it is an intensification of a non-conformity, and it's creating a new non-conformity.
So, but that's the rub, so, and I'm not saying I disagree, but if the home is already within the front setback along Second Avenue, and this is along the same running line of Second Avenue, and it is attached to the home, it is not a new structure, how is it a new non-conformity?
Well, you could argue it's a new non-conformity because there's only, on the right side of the house, because you're looking from Second Ave., you have the, which thankfully, the applicant updated their deficient filing by providing us with a plan today, but you can see that the setback of the porch is 16.3 feet, and they're creating a new bump out, and the setback is going to be 24 and a half feet. Now, on the one hand, Anthony, you could say that's an intensification.
And I, and I, I initially was confused by this application, because it's a variance for a swimming pool, and we've got a lot going on in that regard, but when I looked at this as an addition to a home, which I think it's hard to say that it isn't, I feel like we've viewed this application or applications very similar to this, with an extension of running feet, either right up to that same 16.3-foot setback, or setback a little bit, we've viewed those as Gale findings, and I'm struggling drawing the distinction here. I'm sorry, we're not familiar with Gale. So what I'm questioning my fellow board members on is, is essentially whether or not you need a variance, I'm not sure I'm saying that you don't, but it's, it's certainly a question to me. This, I do want to put in a swimming pool, and we have some other pending applications regarding variances for putting a swimming pool, but the way I'm looking at your application is, you're putting on an addition to your home. What you do with that addition is, in higher things, your business, and I'm questioning that the addition to your home will certainly violate in new footprint the front setback, but given that your home already violates the front setback, I am questioning whether you need a variance, or whether this is a special permit finding, which would require the application of a different standard? I think many would agree it is a lesser standard. But I, I certainly would like to hear from my fellow board members, I, I, I'm welcoming disagreement, because I'm, I'm a little, I was a little perplexed by the application when I looked at it.
May I ask, the, the proposed addition is a, is a roofed structure attached to the building, correct?
Yes.
If this were a living room, it's just, it's walls with a roof on it?
Yeah.
You would just happen to be putting in a big hot tub? Or, I don't need a light to, I don't need a light to make light of this, but I'm suggesting that it is a, it is an addition to the, to the structure which is roofed. Oftentimes, we're discussing additions that encroach on setbacks that are front porches, if they're not roofed, it's not a problem, if it becomes roofed, it might then sometime in the future be enclosed, and if it is enclosed, it could then become living space, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We're, we're often confronted with the concern of what is this going to be used for? My feeling, I think I'm kind of in the same camp as Anthony, is that it is an extension, not an intensification. Brian, what's the new non-conformity?
The...
The non-conformity is purely the front yard setback.
The front yard setback, yes.
So there is currently a front yard setback, non-conformity. This is an extension, but is an extension less, less encroaching on the setback than the current encroachment?
Yes.
So I can't, I wouldn't be able to call it an intensification, probably.
Well, it is an intensification, because you don't...
Well, but it's, in the past, we viewed an intensification as more running feet within the same violated setback.
Okay.
So I, I would actually, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's an extension, an intensification. I, I'm fine with calling it both, but I think that still lends us that it is substantially more detrimental standard, not at a variance standard. That's sort of where I am right now.
Yes, and I, and my, and Brian's itching to speak, but the, I feel kind of, I feel the same way. If this was a, a home office that they were adding, or a, a living area, it really, to me, it's irrelevant what they want to use it for, it's a roofed component of the structure.
Yes.
And, and in that sense, it just, you know, I, I just don't want to talk about pools or anything like that.
It's irrelevant.
It's an extension. It could be living space in the future, it is living space, I don't know what to, I guess you'd call an endless pool living space.
It is, absolutely, it's irrelevant what's taking place.
Right, and that's, that's the point, that's the point I'm trying to be very clear on, I don't, you know, it's, it's a roofed extension. And I do believe our past practice has been to see that as a finding under Gale, as opposed to a variance, and I do believe, and my, my feeling is that that level of, that threshold is much easier to reach. George, any thoughts?
Unfortunately, in this one, I can see both sides, right? You're creating, you're adding non-conforming space, right? That's sort of Brian's point, right? To the other side of it is, yes, but the non-conforming space, in essence, is no more non-conforming than the existing space, in the sense of, it does not violate the setbacks anymore than the current setback violations, right? Just to be clear, kind of what we're, what we're discussing. And I think the question for us is, is this a variance? Here's, right, is this a variance, or is this a finding? Right, under which standard are we looking at this?
One other question for the, for the applicant. Was there any...
Yeah.
...calculation done with respect to the average setback on Second Ave. between your neighbors, between Hadley Road and the next intersecting way?
Oceanside.
Oceanside?
No, but if you stand on our street, I think every single house is not 30 feet back.
I understand that, but...
We're not an engineer to do any specific calculations on that. It's interesting what you guys are talking about, and I agree with Tony and some of the others, that just an addition, it doesn't really matter whether it's a pool or not, it is going to have a roof, it's going to have walls, it's going to be interior space.
Mr. Tomei?
But what happened with us was, our building, our builder applied for a building permit, and I think his name, Mr. Duggan, sent an email that said about the setback, so that's why we would need a variance, so that's why we went for variance, instead of whatever the Gale finding thing is you guys are talking about. There was confusion, I actually talked to Mr. Vogel at the building department, or I'm not really sure what his role is, but he, at first he was like, you don't need these black for a variance, but this, because it was less than 20% of the square footage of the property, but then we realized by looking at the plan that it was, it was starting 24.5 feet instead of 30, and so really we're just asking for five and a half feet here. But to answer your question, no, we did not pay anyone, or get anyone to do any calculations about Second Ave. in terms of non-conformity, but I can tell you, from living on the street for 35 years, that if I look at, I think there's been one out of 12 houses that could be 30 feet back.
Uh, Mr. Tomei?
So, generally, I'm on satellite right now, obviously, this is less than exact, and it's pretty clear that there are, there's one, two, three, four, five homes with frontage on that side of Second Avenue, in between Interbeach Street. This is obviously one of them, of the other four, two of them are more or less just as close to this home, and the other two look to be a little bit further setback, but the applicant might be right, they might not be 30.
I'm...
Eyeballing it, my guess is they probably, is that 24.5 could possibly be conforming, but to be honest, I always, I, I like when people hire attorneys, obviously, because that's how I make my living as well, but I try to go out of my way to make sure that applicants who arrive without attorneys get just as fair of a shape. I, I think that this is a special permit application, and I, just to put my cards on the table, I think that if it has been made as a special permit application, and that's how I looked at it at first glance, and if this was a living room, I, I think I probably would have used the notation that I used on my notes when I think it's a slam dunk Gale, and that's a long way of saying, I, to me, I think this might be a slam dunk Gale approval.
Anthony, I don't disagree, Ms. Mark, uh, Mr. Tomei? What we're talking about here is that, under our bylaws, the average setback, 200 feet on the same side between intersecting ways, am I correct, Sir Carter?
Yeah.
Becomes the setback. So that if you, if an engineer were to calculate the average setback for 200 feet in either direct, well, in, on the way, on which, on the side of which you are, between intersecting ways, and calculated that to be less than or equal to 24.5, you would be in compliance with our bylaw and could go forward.
Okay.
If we were to, as Anthony has suggested, I think, perhaps in his intonation, that if we... that if we view this as a finding under Gale, we could find that we, if we were to agree, we could find to grant, that the special permit would be all right, would be allowed, and you could go forward. But I think it would be far better if we could have evidence that suggested that you were conforming to the average setback. I guess what I'm suggesting before we go forward is, one option you have is to ask your engineer to calculate the average setback on the way, and then submit that to our next meeting, and, or, or actually, you could probably, if you found that it was the average setback, you could withdraw your application and just seek a building permit directly with the building commissioner.
Okay, so, let me just thank you so much for explaining that. So, just to reiterate, I would ask my engineer to calculate the average setback moving in two hundred feet in each direction on the same side of the road as my house is on, not the opposite side.
In two hundred feet, in each direction.
And if the average setback was less than or equal to twenty-four point five feet, then I, how does the special permit part work?
You don't, you don't.
What do you mean by special permit? If, if the average setback was twenty-four and a half or greater?
Then it just starts, then it's.
Twenty-four and a half or less, or less.
Okay, or less. So, it's, but we already, our builder actually, or we already submitted a building permit, and it was kicked back to us.
Yes, because the average setback, the average setback by bylaws is thirty feet. I mean, the standard setback is thirty feet. We have no evidence to suggest that the average setback is otherwise. So, that if the, if the building permit is, comes with a plan that shows the adjoining properties along the way, on the same side, within two hundred feet in either direction, between intersecting ways. So, basically, in your property, it's between Havley Road and Oceanside. So, from Havley Road to your house, and then from your house, two hundred feet to Oceanside, calculate any setbacks there. If it's an undeveloped lot, it calculates as thirty feet. Other properties are calculated as they exist, in fact. And then the average is taken, and that becomes the zoning bylaw setback for that, for your parcel.
Okay, I just, would we include our house in sixteen point three in that average?
Yes.
I don't think you do.
No, you don't?
I think you exclude.
Okay, and so, what you say is.
Excuse me, just want to.
I'm looking for.
I, it, I thought you would have included it, but it's possible that, I'm mistaken, and the, we're seeking some guidance ourselves.
The engineer should know.
The engineer would.
Yeah, the engineer would clearly know.
Your engineer would clearly know.
We're checking the code. We're checking the code.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
In, in simple terms, speaking personally, I think we have a situation that you may be able to do this by right, and I think that would be a preferable way than to have a finding that you can do it by Gale.
It's six twenty point four.
The, the, the bylaw is six twenty point four.
In all districts, no building need be set back on its lot further from a line of a street or way than the average distance from such line of the buildings on the same side thereof, between two intersecting streets and ways, and within two hundred feet of the lot in question. In determining such average, accessory buildings, i.e. sheds, shall not be counted. A vacant lot, or a lot occupied by a building, setback more than the required distance, shall be considered as though occupied by a building setback the required distance.
Does that make sense?
So, within two hundred feet on either side.
Well, but, but shorter if there's intersecting streets, right?
Yes.
Right.
And so, what you just read states that her house does count?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would say yes. There we go, so it's just the five houses, it looks like. So, actually, I guess while we're clarifying, it looks like the two houses on the end, which, where the lots have frontage along her street, the entrances to those houses is on the perpendicular street. Do those homes count?
Yes, they would be corner lots. I can't understand why there were two of them, but there were, there would be a corner lot, they're both, they're, they're front yard setback on Second Avenue.
Yeah, that makes sense, great.
So, if they were built with a perceived side yard setback on Second Ave. At the time they were built, that would still be the front yard setback to this purpose.
I think that's right, yes, okay.
So, I'm, I'm going to ask the applicant, well, I'm going to go to public comment if I give you some time to think about it. So, let's see, is anyone in the queue for public comment?
Q and A session has started.
If you'd like to make a comment on the Q and A session, you press star six. I think we have no one on the queue. We'll give it a couple of seconds. Is that, is no one on the queue? All right, we're going to close public comment, question and answer session.
Q and A session is over.
Ms. Tomé, we're back to you.
We don't have, we don't have Rob tonight, do we?
No, no, he's not here. I, I'm looking at, I'm, I'm looking at my memory banks, but I'm pretty familiar with Second Ave. I think you, we may clearly have a average setback case here.
I, I'm sorry.
Just do it. Go ahead, Rob.
I'm sorry, I, I don't think that we can impute that. We've only decided based on what's in front of us.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that if the applicant wishes to ask for a continuance in order to bring more evidence forward, I think we could consider that.
So, for the, for the applicant, I think maybe with your husband, sort of looking for a little bit more explanation, what our, what it sounds like our suggestion is, is that, obviously, you have, you have your right to ask, or whatever relief you want. But a suggestion might be to continue this hearing, to have your engineer perform the average setback calculation. If the average setback was made your addition at twenty-four and a half feet conforming, then you would not need relief. You could email or reach out to the building office to withdraw your application. And if you probably do that right after you show the average setback to the building inspector, and he hopefully granted you a building permit.
So, withdraw the application, when you say withdraw the application, do you mean withdraw the application for the variance?
For the variance, or special permit for relief, yeah. The application that we're talking about now. So, once you saw that the average setback made your addition conforming, and once you got your building permit, you could withdraw your application. Hopefully, that's something that could be accomplished before our next hearing. Right, if, if the average setback didn't make your addition conforming, you could come back on your continued application where it sounds like, though we haven't all officially decided, it sounds like we would apply a special permit standard. But I can imagine earlier, that you'd have to deal with an appeal period and things like that. It would, I think everyone's in agreement, it would be cleaner if you could do this as a right meeting, without our help and relief.
Okay, and for the calculation, we need to give our engineer instructions on how to do this calculation. I heard you guys talking about on the corners of Havley down Oceanside, do we include those homes and their size setback?
Yes, because a lot that is on a corner lot, a property developed on a corner lot, has two front yards.
Right.
So.
Okay, and, but does it matter what your address is? Like if it's.
No.
If the house has an address of thirty-three ninety-one Oceanside, but it happens to be on, on the corner.
If it has frontage on the way,
It counts.
It counts, and it counts as a front yard. So, even though it may be perceived as built as a side yard, it has frontage on the way, and it is considered a front yard.
Anne, this is Brian. I would, I would ask you to reach out to your engineer, and direct your engineer to the situated zoning bylaw, six twenty point four, and have your engineer prepare a plan in compliance with that, and with the guidelines with your zoning permit application showing the setbacks. Based on that, based on what Anthony has represented, he's looking at on Google Earth, it may be that you can just then withdraw your application, because you will meet that average setback. But we can't make that determination.
Thank you, Brian.
We can't make that determination just based on what Anthony says. What we need to do is make.
Excuse me, just a minute. Ms. Tomé, just a moment, let Brian finish.
What we need to do is make a decision based on what is in front of us. You can request that we continue the hearing, or we can decide based on what is in front of us.
Which is likely a longer process.
Oh, okay, then we would continue.
So, another thing just to keep in mind, if you continue, and your engineer finds that the average setback is not less than, excuse me, not greater than twenty-four point five, but perhaps he finds it's twenty-three, or twenty-six, you know, basically, that makes it a whole lot different from thirty. You know, you might find it's twenty-six feet, in which they should still be encroaching, but it would only be by half a foot. You know, it's a, it's a valuable exercise, although it is probably costly, minimally. But I think, I would recommend you consider it.
You said it's a valuable exercise, but then I missed what you said right after that.
I said it may be costly, in other words, your engineer's going to charge you. But that's minimal in considering what you're trying to accomplish.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we could pay him, that's for sure. Okay, can I just add a question? So, do you get basically a plot plan for the whole street, which would show each house and each setback?
It doesn't have to be a whole plot plan.
We don't need a plan for the whole street. If we just need the engineer to note on your plan that he measures the setback of those buildings on the same side. Typically, they'll note them in a table, they'll take the average, and then that information we noted on the plan, which is certified by the engineer, and that's enough for us to consider as part of the application.
But, but that's.
Essentially enough for the building inspector to consider.
Right, we take that to the building department, right? Once our engineer prepares a plan, if, if we can withdraw, and the building department person says this building permit is accepted, then we withdraw the variance?
Correct, correct.
Not before.
Pending, pending a building permit, your applicant will still be active, but we will just continue it to our next meeting. Presumably, you may be able to acquire this information from your engineer, present it to the building department, obtain a building permit, and then withdraw your application prior to our next meeting.
That would be the ideal thing.
That's what we're thinking too.
If the facts, if the facts play out, that is the ideal thing.
So, would you like us to, would you like us to move for a continuance?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to continue the hearing.
That we allow the applicant to continue to our next regularly scheduled hearing, which is on October fifteenth.
A second?
Second.
Seconded.
Made a seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. So, Mr. and Ms. Tomé, we look forward to hearing that you're happy to withdraw your permit application because you found that you have the ability to build by right. Otherwise, we look forward to seeing you in October.
Okay, it's very much clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the end of our, that's the last applicant on our meeting tonight. Any other business before or saying? I'm told there is not. Chair, you all set?
Aye, yes, thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. We'll say goodnight.
Aye.